Welcome to our September Regular Board of Education meeting. We are glad you are here today. Before we begin, I'd like to share a couple reminders. Please keep the aisles clear during our meeting to allow members of the school system and Sheriff's Department to be able to move about. Also, except for when honoring our flag, our opening prayer, and when participating in the cold audience, please remain seated during our meeting. We hope to have a positive and efficient meeting, and your help is greatly appreciated. Next, we have the roll call. Ms. Bulley, would you please call the roll?
Good evening. Pete Wildebohr.
President.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Josie Barnhart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Stephanie Craybill.
Sheon.
Hugh McManus.
Here.
Stephanie Walker.
Here.
And Stephanie Craybill.
Ms. Craybill, can you hear us? Okay, well, thank you. We will start our meeting with approval of the agenda. Do we hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The first and second, is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, we forgot to put on New Hanover High School update. I would like to add that, please.
Okay, okay. We have a first and a second, any discussion? I think that should be placed under old business. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. I'm gonna go with that passes six-zero. Passes six-zero. Next, we have our invocation. We do have Pastor Kim Collins here today. She is the pastor of discipleship of the Pine Valley Methodist Church. And we'd like to offer, ask her to come forward, if you would, please.
I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity to be here and pray with you, and thank you for your service and your commitment to the students, teachers, and families of New Hanover County. Let us pray. Holy and loving God, we thank you for this day and the many blessings you have given us. Thank you for this opportunity to gather, discuss, plan, and make vital decisions that will benefit our New Hanover County schools. I lift up each board member, give them your guidance, discernment, and wisdom in these decisions and their discussions. Clear their minds of any distractions so they may focus as a team on the task at hand. Bless them, Lord. I lift up our students and pray for your protection to surround them in each school, class, sporting event, activity, or meeting. Grant them the knowledge and skills they need to grow and learn. Calm any fears and doubts. Give them joy and laughter, and may they make lifelong friendships and create wonderful memories. Bless them, Lord. I lift up our teachers and thank you for their hard work and dedication in teaching our children. Give them guidance and strength each day to carry out lessons. Give them joy and compassion in serving their students and families, and when they feel tired and weary, give them your comfort and peace. Bless them, Lord. I lift up our principals, school staff, and administration, and give thanks for their leadership and dedication in serving the students, families, and faculty. I ask that you guide them in wisdom, strength, and compassion. Bless them, Lord. Again, thank you, Father, for this time together. I pray your blessing be upon this meeting so that it may be fruitful for all. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We will have the Laney High School Air Force ROTC providing the presentation of colors under the direction of Colonel Amy Russo and Master Sergeant Bruce Say, Principal Danny Little, and the National Anthem will be performed by music orchestra teacher Alexandra Better and other folks. Colors? I believe we've asked Ms. Walker to lead our pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please. We could have the hologram on that, but before that... I'd like to ask these young people, if they'd entered... First off, awesome job. That was awesome. Yeah, well, it's like, did you need to move yourself?
Thank you so much. Hi, my name is Emma Del Savio, and I am a senior at Hogard High School, and I play the violin.
Hi, my name is Sarah Hong. I'm a senior, and I play the violin.
My name is Carmelo Brennan. I'm a senior at Hogard High School, and I play the viola.
Hello, I'm Matthew Blow. I'm a senior at Hogard, and I play the cello.
That's a lot of strings.
Hello, I'm Audie Joshi. I'm in 10th grade, and I'm a sophomore, and I play the violin.
I'm Blake Thompson. I'm a senior, and I play the violin.
And I'm Alex Better, the orchestra teacher at Hogard and music teacher at Wrightsville Beach Elementary, and thank you for the opportunity to play for you today.
And now, if we could have our Laney cadets introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Logan Reese. I am a senior at Laney High School. Nice to be here. Thank you, guys.
I'm Cadet Captain Alonso Hondros. I am a senior at Laney High School, and I'm glad to be here.
Hello, my name is Dylan George. I'm a junior at Laney High School, and I'm happy to be here.
Hello, I'm First Lieutenant Miller. Happy to be here.
Hi, I'm Cadet Master Sergeant Acol. I am a junior at Laney High School, and I'm very happy to be here.
All right, next, we have the swearing-in of our interim superintendent. Judge Corpening is with us today to lead us in that. Judge Corpening?
It's perfect. Dr. Barnes, I'm gonna ask you to state your name, and then I'm gonna read this oath to you, and if you agree to abide by that oath, then I'll ask you to answer appropriately at the end.
Yes, sir.
State your name.
Christopher Barnes.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as interim superintendent of the New Hanover County Schools this the third day of September 2024? If you agree, please say aye will.
Aye will.
Congratulations.
All right. Good evening. Tonight, we will recognize two unsung heroes of the BOE. We'll be sharing these remarks in English and Spanish, so please save your applause until we've read both. Like to introduce Hogard Assistant Principal Lindsay Levingood, who's been generous enough to share her time with us this evening to read on Espanol.
Thank you. Good evening. Buenas noches. Es posible que reconozcan nuestros dos destinatarios esta noche, y es posible que no hayan tenido la oportunidad de brindarles el reconocimiento que tanto tiempo y profundamente merecen. Esta noche haremos precisamente eso. Guillermo Perez y Brenda Smith son los consejeros, los encargados de los seis edificios en esta área, y lo hacen todo. Cuando hay una reunión de maestros y una revisión de la agenda y un ayuntamiento en el mismo día, ellos están aquí. Saben exactamente cómo debe ser la formación para cada reunión. Y antes y después están reorganizado las mesas, las sillas, colocando las cortinas de la mesa y limpiando el desorden. Son trabajadores y son importantes a nuestro condado. Durante COVID estuvieron aquí. En las tormentas están aquí. Cuando se convoca una reunión de último momento, ellos están aquí. Y nunca escuchara quejarse incluso cuando los radios están apagados. Hacen su trabajo excepcionalmente bien, siempre flexibles y agregables en situaciones difíciles exigentes. Pero lo que queremos que Brenda y Guillermo sepan esta noche es que su trabajo hace posible el nuestro. No están aquí para servirnos, son nuestros colegas, y estamos orgullosos de trabajar junto a ellos. Brenda y Guillermo, gracias por todo lo que hacen por este edificio y esta institución.
I didn't understand that, but I could tell she was reading beautifully, so I'll try to live up to it. You may recognize the faces of our two recipients tonight, but you may not have had the opportunity to give them the recognition that they have long and deeply deserved. Tonight, we will do just that. Custodian Guillermo Perez and custodial supervisor Brenda Smith are the custodians for this building, as well as child nutrition, the district TV studio, Lake Forest Academy, the Spencer Building, and the testing center. And they do it all. When there is a teacher meeting here and an agenda review meeting and a town hall in the same day, just for instance, they are here, knowing exactly what the formation for each meeting should look like, and before and after each one, they are rearranging the 150-pound tables, repositioning hundreds of chairs, hanging up the table curtains, and cleaning up the messes. They are essential personnel in every sense of the term. During COVID, they were here. In storms, they're here. When a last-minute meeting is called, they're here, and you will never hear them complain, even when the mics are off. They do their work exceptionally well, always being flexible and amenable to sometimes demanding situations. But what I want Brenda and Guillermo to know tonight is that their work makes our work possible. Their work makes it possible for the public to be here sitting in these chairs, for dialogue to happen around a horseshoe-shaped formation that they set up, for business to get done. They are not here to serve us. They are our colleagues, and we're proud to work alongside them. Brenda and Guillermo, thank you for all you do for this building and this institution. Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to bring forward to you two of our recipients for our classified recognition program. Unfortunately, Ms. Yvonne Corcoran isn't able to be here tonight, but I'm gonna go ahead and share the wonderful nomination from her colleagues. Hopefully, she's listening from home, tending to her daughter tonight, and then I'll certainly introduce the second one. So first and foremost, Yvonne Corcoran, she... The recognition came from when she was at Sunset Park as an EC teacher assistant. Yvonne is very effective in her planning, execution of tasks, treatment of her students, and most importantly, her dedication and passion for the students in special education. Our students listen and respect her, and she's an absolute joy to work with, and our students love her. Students are her priority, and she makes sure they are happy, safe, and are in a loving and cared-for environment. Yvonne has high standards for her students and treats them with dignity and respect, especially during intense situations that may occur. She is an example for her students and staff, handles anything that comes her way with ease, and is an inspiration to all of us. One other thing I'd like to add is she has now moved into a teacher role, so one of our own start-here, grow-here. So with that, Yvonne, hopefully if you're listening, congratulations. We're very proud of you. And next, I'd like to ask Ms. Sarah Barnett from Transportation to join us up front, and Ms. Trafton, and I hear Ms. Barnett's daughter and grandson are here. I don't know if they might want to come up. We'll leave it up to them. Come on up. Come on up, please. All right, good deal. If you don't mind, you can stand right up here, please. You guys all come up together. So I'd like to say Ms. Barnett is definitely legendary here, and this is just a little tidbit of what has been shared. So on any given day, students from Ms. Sarah's bus arrive a little better off because of the attention she so lovingly gives them. They walk into school with more confidence, ready to tackle the day. When recently asked what her recipe for success is, she stated, "She simply pays attention." She is keenly in tune with her riders and can even detect when a child is about to have a seizure. For older students, she demands mutual respect and is the first to give it by making sure they are presentable and ready for each school day. If a student needs a baby wipe to brush Miss's dirt off their cheek, she has it ready when they take their first step on the bus. She will be the first to pick up students who missed a bus or will circle around until parents can meet her for a drop-off. She once said, "We are the first people they see in the school system, so we can either make their day or not make their day. I look at every day as a new one." And another pleasure, I think I've said before, of mine is being able to participate in the hiring of many of our employees in the school district. And so with that, it's been a busy spring and summer, and we have a few more of our administrative hires that I'd like to introduce tonight and ask you to come forward. So let's start out with Tarkeisha Williams. She is our new assistant principal at Ashley High School. Prior to this role, she was the DTA students at Hogard High School. She formerly was a tutor at Holly Shelter and at J.C. Rowe, and we are thrilled to have her join the Screamin' Eagles team. If you want to wait up here, too. Just hang with everybody. All right, let's see. Next is assistant principal for Snipes Elementary, Melanie Rhine. Melanie is no stranger to New Hanover County as well. She was an assistant principal at Masonboro Elementary. She's been an instructional coach, MTSS coach. She was previously at Alderman Elementary, a reading coach, Sunset Park, and is coming to us back from Pender County School, so we're thrilled to have you here also. Welcome. Welcome back. Next up, we've got Mr. Zatt, principal, the new principal at Holly Tree Elementary. Prior to his role as principal, Mr. Zatt was the assistant principal at Morriville Elementary for three years. He has been a fourth and fifth-grade teacher, also an instructional coach, and a digital teaching learning specialist, so he's got quite a wealth of experience as well. So welcome, welcome. Well, just welcome, happy you're here. And then lastly, Dr. John Rob Morgan. Come on down. He is our new Director of Student Safety for Discipline, Athletics, and Hearing Board. I'm sure to many of you, he's also no stranger here. He was previously the principal at New Hanover High School, has also served as an assistant principal, and was an assistant principal at Ashley High School. You guys might have some notes to share here. And he is also serving on the Board of Directors for Norwich NC, so we're all very happy to have you here and join the team. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, we just want to welcome you all. We know you're gonna do a great job, so thank you so much for being here. Welcome back. And as per normal, I did skip something, so we need to go back and to approve the minutes. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, and any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. I'm gonna say again, carries six-zero. At this point, we have our...
I am. I have been on the whole time. They just fixed my video.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, then, I'll change, I'll retract that and say that passes seven-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're looking for our student voice. Come on down, folks.
Good evening, board members. My name is Loparna, and I'll be speaking on behalf of the Student Voice Leadership Team today to provide a progress update. To start off, Dr. Barnes, the Student Voice team is thrilled to have you join our educational community and look forward to the fresh perspectives that you will bring. As we embark on this new academic year, we are eager to work with you closely to address the challenges and opportunities that face our district. So as for a progress update, our team is currently in the process of reviewing applications, and we are thrilled by the interest we've received from students across the district. We've been working with Ms. Beam, as well as the principals of different schools, to distribute the application, and we will be evaluating these applications using the same comprehensive rubric that proved so effective last year. This approach ensures consistency and fairness in our selection process, allowing us to build a diverse and capable group of student representatives. We anticipate that the decision-making process will conclude in a few weeks, after which we will announce the selected representatives. We are also planning a kickoff summit to be held sometime in October, where the new representatives will have the opportunity to meet, collaborate, and set their agenda for this upcoming year. We warmly invite all board members to attend this event, as your support and involvement are crucial to the success of our initiatives, and we will provide further details once the date and venue are confirmed. Additionally, we understand that some necessary changes are being made to the Student Voice policy, such as updating the language to reflect changes in diversity, equity, and inclusion positions in the county, and this will affect who our primary point of contact is, and we would love to discuss this matter with you later. Thank you all for your continued dedication to our schools. We look forward to continuing our collaboration and working together to advance the educational experience for everyone in our community.
I do have to say, that was well said. I appreciate that very much. Does anybody have anything to add? Any questions, Ms. Walker? I know you do.
Well, 'cause I... Well, you don't have to come back up. I was just... You can, and you don't have to... Anyway, I'm just saying I'm excited to see what the second year brings. I think you guys do a tremendous job, and the torch has been passed, and so I'm excited to see what you guys do this year in building the program, and hopefully it lasts for years to come.
Anything else? All right, thank you, and again, thank you for a great presentation. I see several folks from Teacher Voice, so I'm not sure who's it, because it says TBD here. I see Ms. Moon and Ms. Sale, so are you both coming? Either of you coming? Anybody?
And Ms. Jeffries here.
And Ms. Jeffries here.
Oh, that's right, Ms. Jeffries. That's right, Ms. Jeffries, too. We could... All right, Ms. Moon, welcome.
Thank you.
By the way, I do have to tell everybody that my son, every time I mention that Ms. Moon's going to speak, says that she is without a doubt his favorite all-time teacher, forever and ever.
Well, thanks. He was pretty easy to appreciate, I'll tell you that, thanks.
I want to say my daughter also.
Got it from his mom. Yeah, no doubt. No doubt.
I think everybody had Ms. Moon. She's awesome.
Well, hey, everyone. My name is Hannah Moon, and I'm an English teacher at Laney High School and New Hanover County's current Teacher of the Year. So as we have just begun the new school year, we teachers are filled with so many emotions. We're excited, we are optimistic, we are tired, already, yes. We are hopeful, but most of all, we are ready. A new school year brings about so many opportunities for growth, change, and success and joy. So as we begin a new school year, I'd like to offer some tips, if you will, for the board, for parents, and for our community to ensure a successful school year for everyone. So tip number one is to please treat educators as professionals. With almost 2,000 educators in our county, we have some of the most intelligent, hard-working, fun, and exceptional teachers in this state. We have attended top-tier universities. We've excelled in the business sector. We have worked in the healthcare field. We have served in the military. We have attended graduate school, and we've achieved National Board certification. Treating teachers as professionals is essential for fostering a high-quality education system while enhancing success for both students and teachers. When teachers are recognized as professionals, they receive the respect that they deserve and the autonomy to exercise their expertise in the classroom. Acknowledging our specialized skills and the knowledge that we bring to the classroom promotes an atmosphere of trust, recognition, and celebrates the teacher as the expert in the classroom. Then, that leads to success for everyone: teachers, students, and the community. Trust me, we are in the trenches every day, and we know what's best for our students, so please trust us. Tip number two: Ask, don't assume. I am asked probably on a weekly basis about wild rumors that people hear about what is happening in our schools and our classrooms. I've heard things you literally cannot believe are coming out of people's mouths, and I've heard small things that could possibly seem true to the uninformed. Please, don't assume you know what's happening in our classrooms until you witness it with your own eyes. I might be speaking for myself here, but I welcome board members, central office staff, please come into my classroom, see what's going on. Come and sit in my classroom and learn about Hamlet. Come in my classroom as I struggle to speak Spanish with my EL students, it's a real trip. And come into my classroom and watch me play a loud, raucous EOC review game. Too many assumptions are made about what's happening in our classrooms, so please, at any time, ask, don't assume. Tip number three: Focus on the positive. There are so many wonderful things happening in our schools and our classrooms every day. We have students making gains on state testing, students setting state records, students making their first A on an assignment, students who feel comfortable to speak English for the first time in their classrooms. We have teachers winning awards and piloting programs. There are big wins and small wins, and the focus in our county should be on the positive. Focusing on the positive aspects of education will transform the learning environment. It creates a more engaging and supportive atmosphere for students and educators. Emphasizing strengths and successes rather than shortcomings creates a culture of encouragement and resilience. Focusing on the positive promotes a collaborative and optimistic school culture, and that ripple is effective spread in the community, creating joy for everyone. And finally, tip four: Please empower public education. We are all public servants, just trying to serve the greater good. Public education is the cornerstone of our society. It's the great equalizer, providing every child with the opportunity to learn, grow, and realize their full potential, regardless of background or circumstance. It's up to all of us to ensure that our students receive a superior education in a safe and positive learning environment where they're prepared for the future. But teachers cannot do it alone. We're balancing a million spinning plates at one time, and we cannot do it alone. We need the board to enact thoughtful policies that benefit all students, policies that keep the rigor high and help students to reach their full potential. We need policies that support teachers and show that we are valued. We need involved parents and a supportive community. So, as we enter the new school year, let's make it a year to remember where teachers feel valued, students reach their highest potential, and our community comes together to support the one thing that unites us all: public education. Thank you.
Very, very well said, and I can see now why my son values you so much. So, excellent job, excellent. Thank you, and a lot of very important words to be taken to our heart, so thank you again. Great job. At this point, I'll turn it over to our interim superintendent, Dr. Barnes, for his report.
All right, folks, buckle up. There's so many good things that are happening, it's going to take a minute. So first and foremost, this week, our pre-K centers opened, and we welcome back our littlest learners, and with that, all of our schools are up and running. We want to welcome our students and families, whether you're returning to us from last year or new to the district. We're really glad to have you learning here with us at New Hanover County Schools. I also want to thank you all for all the staff and the tremendous effort you guys put in to making the start of the school year such a success. Transportation, child nutrition, operations, teachers, TA, school leaders, all of you worked so hard to make sure that students had a safe and supportive learning environment and that we're meeting needs right out of the gate. I'm proud to have you all on the team, and I thank you for all the work that you do. Tomorrow morning, the State DP, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, will officially release school data for the 23-24 school year. This data will include how students performed on end-of-grade and end-of-course tests, academic growth, school performance grades, graduation rates, and schools identified for support and improvement. Regardless of the scores, we know two things. The work our teachers and students put into growing and demonstrating that growth is monumental, and we celebrate each and every one of you and all the students as well. But we also know that not all growth can be measured by standardized tests, and school success is about more than just strictly academics. So while we're excited to see what we've accomplished tomorrow, we know incredible things are happening in our schools that may or may not show up on a scorecard. We are busy hiring for positions funded by the New Hanover County Endowment's Early Literacy Grant. We've had 79 applications for these literacy facilitator positions, which will serve pre-K to third-grade teachers and help them accelerate literacy in the classrooms. We've already hired 17 of these early learning facilitator positions, and we're continuing to interview to fill positions at the eight remaining school sites and one pre-K site. As a reminder, this $8.7 million grant will fund 26 of these facilitator positions, and one to service pre-K schools and one for our elementary school in the district, and they'll provide professional development to teachers for three years. It also pays for two pre-K teachers and two pre-K teacher assistants, allowing us to serve 36 more of our pre-K students. We're grateful to the endowment for this official, for this critical funding, and we're excited to see the growth it will yield. Over the last month and a half, I've been going on what I call a listening tour to schools across the district, and I've been asking folks, everyone, the same three questions. What's one thing you would never change about the district? What's one thing you would change immediately? And what's the biggest rock or stumbling block in your way? The reason for doing this is simple. The climate survey gave us quantitative data, but what we're missing is the qualitative data, and we want to know what the survey says and what it really means. So I've been face-to-face with over 1,800 New Hanover County staff in the last month and a half, so I can listen to what the survey means to them. I'll be organizing, correlating all that feedback into some themes, and I'll be presenting it to the board and to the public at the next agenda review meeting, if it so pleases the board. I want to thank all the New Hanover County school staff that I've been meeting with for their thoughtfulness, their candor, and their perspective. It's going to take all of us to ensure a positive climate in New Hanover County Schools, and I appreciate everyone who's been a part of the process. That concludes my report.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Mine's not going to be quite as long. This month has been a very busy month. We welcomed Dr. Barnes as our interim superintendent, and we thanked the other applicants for their interest in working with our school system. We welcome our students, teachers, staff, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and parents back to school. We had a successful opening and look forward to a fantastic school year ahead. We want to thank our partners, the county commissioners, for supporting our school system, agreeing to fund a study on New Hanover High School, and what will take, what it will take to bring our oldest school and make it a wonderful and safe place to learn again. I enjoyed visiting schools and want to thank all the schools for their positivity and welcomingness that they showed me and their students and their parents. I also want to take a moment to thank my fellow board members for spending time in schools. I think every single one of us has been in schools. That was one of the things that, one of the many things we took from the survey, which was that we, you know, we are wanted in schools. We just heard from Ms. Moon, that we're wanted in schools. So, you know, here we come. You know, we're going to continue to do it. I want to thank everyone for attending the town hall, and that gave us some very valuable insights and opinions that the board was able to utilize in moving forward. We also met with all of the principals for more valuable insights, and again, we thank you for being, as we heard from Dr. Barnes, very truthful and bringing forth concerns, but also a lot of positivity. And I think that's where I'd like to end the discussion, is I think we've had a very positive start. We want to continue to work together and build as we move forward for the good of all our students. So, thank you very much. At this time, I will turn it over to Mrs. Mason, and she will begin our call to audience. Mrs. Mason?
Thank you all for being here. Thank you for signing up to do this. Let's start with Chris Sutton. Chris Sutton.
Chris Sutton.
Women's wrestling Title IX complaint. I thought the entire Title IX discussion was supposed to be tabled until after the board had the opportunity to provide remedy by potentially voting in women's wrestling tonight, since that would make the complaint a moot point. That women's wrestling agenda attachment makes it appear as though there are no Title IX issues that occurred in our district regarding this matter. That attachment downplays the Title IX concerns as a misunderstanding with parents, volunteers, and supporters, completely leaves out the fact that even, we even had a 2023 Wilmington Star News article showcasing how Laney has a women's wrestling team and how they've been finding success. Even the head coach of wrestling there openly states that they have been acting as separate teams. How does Title IX determine that there is no Title IX violation without even speaking to the coach about what was said and what occurred? The head coach there has stated that he's, they've been acting as separate teams, going to different events, et cetera. 92 kids signed up to wrestle there this year. 27 of them are female. Understand the drastic cuts that will be made if we force him to stop acting as separate teams and only keep 30 or so students. How many of those 27 girls do you think will make the cut when competing against males? I'm going to have to skip down because I do not have much time. If you will support a five-year test run, then I truly believe you will be impressed by the results, and by results, I mean average GPA scores above average, standardized test results, lower-than-average absenteeism, less conduct referrals. Over half of them are minority students. A lot of them are considered our at-risk students. They're finding success. We need to give them more paths, more avenues to success. We don't need to be closing doors. We've got athletes at every single school currently. We had them every single year. I graduated in 2006 from Laney. We had girls at every single high school then. This is the right thing to do. I hope y'all join me in being on the right side of history with this. Thank you.
Let's see, posing.
Tonight, I would like to talk about equity and equality. In the last three months, this board and the UNC Board of Governors has passed policies removing DEI from documents and campuses. There are a lot of people who keep saying, "We don't need equity because we have equality." But equality is not equity. Let me give you examples. Equity. In elementary school, my younger brother had trouble pronouncing some sound combinations. He had speech therapy, and he and my mom practiced a lot, but neither my older brother or I had speech issues. We didn't need speech therapy. This is equity. If equality was required, either everyone would have received speech therapy, or no one would, whether, regardless of need. Equality. My grandmother was born in 1908 in a German community in Illinois. She spoke only German until she started school. Then and there, everyone was supposed to be taught the same material and receive the same discipline. English was the language at school. My grandmother was whipped if she spoke German. Having the exact same thing expected of and provided to every student is equality. Now, we have many English-language learners in our schools. Fortunately, we don't beat them if they speak their native language. We provide them with special classes focused on their level of English. That may be picture books, even in high school. Because humans learn to listen, then speak, the ELL classes start newcomers with lots of listening. When I was teaching elementary ELL, we didn't expect the kids to talk until they had been here at least a semester. We taught them at their level. If you require equality, we will demand that all children speak English the day they arrive, but we don't, yet. To repeat, equality is requiring the same thing of everyone. Equity is giving everyone what they need to be successful. Equity is vital in our schools and society, and we must preserve it.
Good afternoon. I'm Judy Justice, and I'm about to let you know what's going on here. I would like to say to you and all the staff of New Hanover County Schools, congratulations to a successful first week of school. It is now up to you, the school board, to make sure that your leadership for this school year supports our district's success. In other words, do your job and focus on educating all of our students, not carrying out those political agendas many of you are focused on over the past year. Here is an example of a major change that needs to take place if the success is to continue. The climate survey, taken in the spring, pointed out some of the challenges you, as part of our district's leadership, are facing. 88% of our teaching staff completed it. One of the most telling responses by 80% of them was that they felt you, the school board, was out of touch with the realities of teaching and the challenges faced in our schools. 65% of them said that they feared retaliation if they spoke out about education issues. That is why I'm standing in front of you today, to help give that 65% of voice. You have already taken the first step to listening to the teachers when you finally heard their concerns about the previous superintendent's leadership. Now you need to listen to them about your negative leadership behavior. Stop trying to hunt out so-called violations of what you think is morally wrong of our staff according to your political agenda. Teachers are professionals with curriculums supplied by experts with decades of knowledge. A lot of the language and actions you have used since you have been on the board are being used to beat down our teachers. This is why many of our most experienced teachers have left the district over the last year. If you want them to stop, take the advice that a very wise and accomplished leader recently gave to our nation when she said, "The true measure of the strength of a leader is not who they beat down, but is who they lift up." You are the school leaders. Turn the page and start lifting up our staff. Do not continue to beat them down. Thank you. And you're a coach, and you know that's true, right? Okay.
Good evening. When I sign up to speak at the monthly school board meeting, my motivation is always what is best for students and what is best for staff. So with that being said, I want to talk about the budget. Last year, I started talking about the budget in November, and I cautioned that you couldn't wait until spring to deal with it, but no one listened, so this year, I'm starting earlier. You all are still feeling the sting of a complicated budget season, one that was filled with lack of communication, half-truths, personality conflicts, and a reduced budget. I'm going to wager that none of you enjoyed the process and would like to avoid a repeat of it in the next budget cycle. Here are some ideas that just might help, and they definitely won't hurt. First, look at the state level. Currently, there is $1.7 billion sitting in the bank in undistributed Leandro funding. The NCGA has been ordered to distribute these funds, but they said nah. Has the board as a group taken a public stance on this? Have you asked for New Hanover County's funds? You don't have to reach out daily, but have you reached out at all, and if not, why? Second, New Hanover County has the endowment fund. No matter what anyone says, the money was originally earmarked for the schools. Then all of a sudden, the schools had to apply for funding like other groups, and then they weren't successful. Yet somehow, when it became really dire, the county commissioners were able to go and procure some endowment funding to help with literacy, so it seems like there is some flexible interpretation there. Which leads me to my third point. Please take the time to develop relationships with the county Please take the time to develop relationships with the county commissioners. It is essential they understand what needs to happen to run a school system. Would you like someone who only meets with you when they need money? No. Instead of waiting until March or April and trying to fit in meetings, why not start now? Share bite-sized details with the commissioners about how something in the schools is handled and how it could be different with more funding. Please don't spend the spring fighting about the budget and then passing one no one wants. Invest your time wisely now. As the Greek philosopher Dionys said, "The foundation of every state is the education of its youth." It is never wrong to invest in and advocate for students and schools. Thank you.
Dr. Tim Merrick.
Hello again. Good evening. Um, it's come to my attention that there are two political activist groups that would like to get involved in our schools. And you've made it quite clear how you feel about political activism and I agree with you. Politics has no place in our schools. Moms for Liberty, a group that's classified as anti-government extremist group by the Southern Poverty Law Center, wants to give out pocket versions of the Constitution to our students. The booklets are branded by another political activism group, the 917 Society. Now, before anyone gets the wrong idea, because I know someone will, I love the idea of our students having a Constitution in their back pocket. I think it's fantastic. In fact, they could even look up how some of the policies of this board have infringed upon the First Amendment rights. So, I actually support having a Constitution being given to our students, but only if the stipulations of Policy 5210 are followed. And if there is nothing printed except what is in the Constitution. In other words, no branding, no advertisements, and no mention of who donated them. And while you might think I'm nitpicking, what if the ACLU printed a pamphlet on gerrymandering and voter suppression and how they affected black populations? Topics that fit the DPI standards, by the way. And then if the NAACP wanted to distribute them? I'm just thinking that you might find reasons to deny that application for political activism reasons. So, be very careful of what doors you open and to whom, because lawsuits are expensive. Thank you.
It's a pleasure being here tonight and I think we can all agree that when a five, six, or seven-year-old may need to be removed from the classroom for their own safety or the safety of others. Love Our Children supports the use of in-school suspensions, or ISS, when they are led by certified teachers. An in-school suspension allows a certified teacher, counselor, social worker, or behavior therapist an opportunity to address underlying issues or lagging skills that may contribute to a child's behavior. They can focus on social skills. They might include handling transitions, maintaining focus, expressing concerns, needs or thoughts in words, or seeking attention in appropriate ways. An in-school suspension makes more sense than an out-of-school suspension. The child can receive the social skills support they evidently need. There are no long-term benefits from kicking a five, six, or seven-year-old out of school. Just none. By the way, whatever happened to the certified ISS teachers? It seems, they've seemed to disappear since 20 or 21. Our hope is that every school has an in-school suspension option where our five, six, and seven-year-olds can go, not as a punishment, but as a continuation to learn skills and thrive. It's not too early to start planning and budgeting for certified in-school suspension teachers for next year. Our children deserve it. Thank you for showing love to all our children in New Hanover County School System.
Thank you. Robin Kelly Wheat Rivers.
Hello. Love Our Children believes that children need to be in school where they can learn and thrive. There are no long-term benefits of kicking five, six, and seven-year-olds out of school. Our hope is that teachers are receiving the support that they need to help the children stay in school. Classrooms with challenging behavior need teaching assistance. The teaching assistance can help children who need immediate assistance during a lesson or activity. Teachers need access to counselors and social workers and behavior specialists who can work directly with children with challenging behaviors or can, who can help teachers develop plans for positive alternatives to out-of-school suspensions. Based on the comments from the staff climate survey, it would seem that we have fewer teaching assistants, counselors, and social workers, and behavior specialists than before. Why is that? As one person wrote, "Being short-staffed in school and classrooms has contributed to an unsafe environment." Love Our Children wants safe schools for all students and all staff. Kicking five, six, and seven-year-olds out of school is not the answer. Hiring more teaching assistants, counselors, social workers, and behavior specialists is a good start. So start working on that now for next year's budget. Thank you.
Good evening. Love Our Children believes we have good children in our schools. Sometimes they make bad decisions or do bad things. There are no long-term benefits for kicking five, six, and seven-year-olds out of school. Not a single one. My heart aches when I imagine how difficult the behavior and ramifications are for students, their parents, and the teachers. Our hope is that teachers are receiving the training they need to help children stay in school where they can learn and thrive. In February 2023, 38 staff members received training on the collaborative and proactive solutions model for acquiring, quote, "A more accurate, compassionate understanding of a child's concerning behaviors." This group of principals, assistant principals, EC teachers, social workers, counselors, and other educators represented seven of our elementary schools and Lake Forest Academy. My dad always reminded us, kids, that if we were not part of the solution, we were part of the problem. So how was the CPS model implemented this past year? Did any of the schools see improvement in student behavior? Did they have fewer out-of-school and in-school suspensions? If this training helped to increase the feeling of safety and reduce the suspension numbers, wouldn't the board want to know that? Or did understaffing our schools negate the benefits of the training? If you don't know how effective the training was, how you know if it should be implemented district-wide, tweaked, or even thrown out? If it is not your responsibility to make sure that the principals, assistant principals, social workers, and counselors receive the training they need to keep our youngest learners in school, then whose responsibility is it? Love Our Children supports the CPS model as a positive alternative to punitive and exclusionary discipline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Data from the school district shows that five, six, seven-year-old students continue to be kicked out of New Hanover County schools. Love Our Children knows that our children are not broken. The system is broken. For generations, black students have received out-of-school suspensions disproportionately compared to their peers. The data is even worse for black students in the special education program. We were glad to hear last month that our schools are no longer under a sanction from the federal government's Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. This should mean that all of the federal funding is available again for our special education programs. But we're not out of the woods yet. The number of suspended black students, students is still unacceptable. You know, we have elementary schools that only had one or none, uh, out-of-school suspensions during last year. One possible explanation of that is that students from those schools had their needs met. Acknowledging that students in the different schools can have needs that were not met. Ignoring problems doesn't make them go away. Look no further than New Hanover High School to see that. Acknowledging the high rate of suspension of black students is a long overdue situation. Consider this your monthly reminder that the system is broken. Thank you.
Good evening. Love Our Children believes that data should inform policies. So we were very interested in last month's presentation on disciplined data. We understand that the information that was presented was unverified data, but one would hope that the numbers would be in the ballpark as somewhat accurate. Now, the Student Support Services monthly report for June 2024 lists a total of 2,145 short-term suspensions. However, we were told during the presentation that there were 3,116 short-term suspension assignments. How could there be a discrepancy of an additional 971 suspensions for the past school year? That's 50%. Which number is more accurate? Are either of them accurate? Love Our Children believes that the, hopes that the verified data will be released to the public very soon. And with cuts to the Student Support Services Division and the Office of Communications and Outreach, we also hope that the monthly suspension data will soon be available to the public. The board needs that information to inform your policy decisions and the public deserves the data to ensure that all our children learn and thrive. By the way, compared to 2021 and 2022 presentation, short-term suspensions for this past school year went up 15%. Sadly, we know that K through two suspensions went up. That is shameful.
Thank you.
Love Our Children believes that the public deserves accurate data. This applies to Short Term Suspension Policy 4351. It says students under age eight or grade three will not be suspended except in response to incidents involving drugs and alcohol, threats and assaults, or weapons, bomb threats, terrorist threats, and clear threats to safety. During the past two school years, when elementary principals made a determination to suspend a five, six, or seven-year-old, many of them cited one of those three types of violations. Unfortunately, a few principals cited lesser infractions such as inappropriate behavior, disrespect, or theft. This made it appear that a few principals were suspending our youngest learners in violation of the suspension policy. Last year, we were assured principals would record infractions accurately and that didn't happen. Last week, we were assured again. Accurate data helps all of us monitor the implementation of policies. Hopefully, the public will still have access to the K-2 suspension data as we've had in previous years. Two years ago, we thought revising Policy 4351 would reduce the number of K-2 suspensions and increase the use of positive alternatives so our children could stay in school to learn and thrive. Tragically, the number of K-2 suspensions increased. So, what will you do differently this year to keep our five, six, and seven-year-old children learning in school? Thank you.
Thank you.
Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. Our nation was built on Judeo-Christian principles. Both prayer and the word of God were removed from our schools in the 60s. Our choices have consequences. We are reaping them all over our nation. Jesus, I am the way, the truth, and the life. All Scripture is given by God for instruction in righteousness that we may be complete, thoroughly equipped for every good work. I have set before you today life and good, death and evil. I command you to love the Lord your God, to walk in his ways, and to keep his commandments that you may live and the Lord your God will bless you in the land you possess. The blessings of Deuteronomy 28 were once the hallmark of America. America has turned away from God and is under curses from, for disobedience. Deception calls evil good and good evil. Hearts are turned away so they do not hear and are drawn away to worship other gods. Righteousness exalts a nation. To him who knows to do good and does not do it, to him it is sin. It is time to draw a line in the sand for our children. No more compromise. All of heaven is watching. Open your mouth, judge righteously, and speak for those who cannot. A no vote is a vote. Mordecai told Esther, "Do not think in your heart that you will escape if you remain silent." What if you were the superintendent and the school board for such a time as this? What will be your choice?
The beginning of a new school year is a time of hope, excitement, and optimism. Each, each new year reminds us that free public education is a critical public good. We're reminded that public school can be the great equalizer, opening opportunities up for all children. We're reminded that regardless of race, income, sex, or disability status, all children have a right to a free, quality public education. We're also reminded of the monumental task our teachers have to care for, protect, and educate every child who comes into their classroom. Their jobs literally change and save lives. Each of us has a teacher who made a mark on our lives forever changing us for the better. Unfortunately, that our teachers and students have been under attack by some of you sitting at the dais. As Ms. Bradford said, "You have terrorized staff." I'd argue that you have also terrorized students and families, not just through the budget process, but through your policies. You banned the book stamp because you did not trust teachers. You micromanaged what can be hung in classrooms, seemingly because you despise LGBTQ students and staff. Repeatedly, some of you have accused staff of grooming and indoctrinating children. Thankfully for you, a new school year is also an opportunity for a fresh start. It's a time to reflect, grow, and do better. You have the opportunity to show respect to all of our staff and students regardless of their race, sexual, or gender identity. You have the opportunity to reverse the damage you have caused in our district. We implore you to learn from the staff survey and stop your political nonsense, to trust our teachers to teach, and stop perpetuating dangerous lies about them. And finally, I call on our community to vote in November for leaders who believe in the hope and power of a strong public school system and who will govern with compassion, not hate.
At a time when our schools are most unsafe, the board passes careless policies that intentionally put our children at risk. A year ago, you settled in court on behalf of 14 minors that were sexually assaulted by former Teacher of the Year because New Hanover County schools did not protect them under Title IX law. And now you spin a false narrative that federal law is optional, once again risking the safety of our children. You defy law and target LGBTQ plus students through publicly outing them to do harm to them and withhold their rights without any regard for the consequences. At a time when violence runs rampant on our campus where students are hospitalized from injury and feel it necessary to bring weapons to school to protect themselves, you try to restrict cell phone usage to keep the community from knowing what's going on. You realize that students having access to Snapchat alone actually keeps them safe as they can avoid areas of conflict and share warnings. The whole reason we even know that there were guns at school is because students share information in a cry for help that you're not listening to. And how else will they reach us from under their desks with tearful goodbyes during many lockdowns? It's irresponsible to even consider taking their lifeline to the outside world. Who will be responsible when these phones are dead? Who will be responsible when these phones are damaged, similar to how their vehicles and backpacks are destroyed during the many illegal searches that take place in our school prisons that turn up nothing? Perhaps that's why you keep a full staff of attorneys on hand to defend this overuse of force and restrict access to videos that might show the harsh truth. Let's discuss access to fentanyl. That resulted in this poorly-written policy for Narcan, which gives no usable information on how to prevent a student from flatlining in a classroom when the one person authorized to administer Narcan is seven buildings away and there is no protocol. Every staff member should be trained to administer Narcan, and all staff and students should have access. In the past, New Hanover County Schools has already had sexual assault, rape, and death by suicide on their conscience. Add to that drug overdose and school violence with the largest police presence in the state of North Carolina. That's clearly not working.
Thank you. Your time is up. Gail Major, Natasha, too.
Good evening. Happy Belated Labor Day to everyone. I am here tonight. I was going to give an update on Title IX. Moms for Liberty is currently gaining more and more members. We are getting more and more school buildings exempt from the outrageous Title IX revisions. The most recent list was put out on August 28th, and I'll be forwarding that to the attorneys and the rest of the school board this week. I'm here to speak about Constitution Day, which is coming up on September 17th. American schools that receive any federal funding are under a federal mandate to hold an education program about the United States Constitution for its students on this date, September 17th. On February 29th in 1952, the U.S. Congress designated this day, September 17th, as Citizenship Day. On August 2nd in 1956, Congress requested that the President of the United States proclaim the beginning of the week as September 17th and ending in September 23rd of each year as Constitution Week. As member of Moms for Liberty, we are delivering over 2,400 U.S. Pocket Constitutions to every eighth grader in this county. I believe Jan Boswell, the Chapter Chair, has reached out to all of the board members. She has reached out to the principals. We have other resources to provide the teachers, so they have everything they need in order to observe this wonderful day and celebrate our amazing Constitution. This also will, is promoted and endorsed by the, I shouldn't say endorsed, but supported by the New Hanover County School Policy of 3530, which is the citizenship and character education policy. I look forward to seeing everyone next week when we deliver these U.S. Pocket Constitutions. If there's anything else we can help out with, please don't hesitate to reach out and ask us. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see Gail Major, so this concludes our call to audience.
Right. Thank you to everyone that spoke today. We do certainly appreciate it. Board members, do we need to take a five-minute break? Okay. All right. My watch says 6:14. Let's be back on the dais at 6:20. 6:20.
It's like you and my bladder completely.
Okay, Board, it is 20 after. We'd ask everyone to return, please. Thank you for promptly coming back. It is 20 after, so we will continue. Our next order of business is consensus items. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consensus items as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Barnum. And we have a first and second in discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Ms. Crablestallin? Nope. Okay, we'll carry that down to 6-0 to be correct. Next, we have policy consensus. Ms. Mason.
I'm going to pull 3220 and send that back to committee upon request of Ms. Brinson for changes.
3220 back.
3220. 3220. 3220.
3220.
That needs a second. I'll make it.
Okay. 3220, Technology and Education. Okay, that's going back. All in favor of sending 3220 back? Wait, okay. Okay, yeah. Okay. All in favor of sending 3220 back to committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Carries 6-0. Is there a motion for consensus?
So I would like to make a motion to pass the remaining policy consensus.
Is there a second? We have a first and second in discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Carries again 6-0. Policy for first reading, Ms. Mason.
These are just for viewing, and they'll go back to policy for second reading, and they'll come back to you next month. And the policies for second reading.
Okay, so that's 3225, 4312, 7320 is first reading, and policies for second reading, Ms. Mason.
And I would just make a motion that we approve these as written. Second.
Just because we heard a comment a moment ago, I would have a question, and I don't have, I'd pull it up. But who is authorized at a school to administer?
Ms. Barnum, can you answer that one?
So technically, our school nurses are our go-to. However, in emergency situations, there are, I would say, civilians, basically any person that can carry those and can get those. Many places offer them, so I'm not going to be surprised. Like, many pharmacies hand them out, many support groups hand them out, because there isn't, as I'm told, again, not a medical professional, as I'm told, there's not a concerning side effect to being administered naloxone if it is not an overdose, if it's not an opioid interaction. So I have known of staff that do carry them in their, either their backpacks or their cars, in the event that they see a crisis situation and they want to be able to respond in a way similar to a CPR response, but this one is the injection. So our number-one go-to is the school nurse and maybe even an athletic trainer, that kind of thing. But there are staff that do carry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And my question, just kind of along the lines of what are their dosages that's going to be kept at schools? And I see that it says there's going to be locked position of it. I assume the nurse's office, but I didn't know if there was going to be like a standard protocol that we kind of follow, so in the event that the nurse is not there, people are aware.
Yes. So when there is, when there are substances like that, and same with like an EpiPen, and those are stored in the nurse's office, and they may be stored in another place on a large campus as a second or third location, then other first responder staff are trained on where those are in the event that that staff is not present.
And I was going to ask a follow-up on that. Can you say, you know, like in a large campus, how many first responders do we typically have, you know, in, because I remember back in my day, I was a first responder, that, you know, if nurse was off-campus, I was a backup person.
I, I would venture a guess, but I would rather give you an accurate number after I can collect that for you.
Okay. Ms. Walker?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment that I know, I know they sell this over-the-counter now. So, I mean, I'm, I have, not a medical person, I don't know how strong or, I don't know anything about that, but I know they do sell it now over the counter, so anybody can buy it. And I think the reason being, I think the, the having it is probably safer than not having it in some cases. I think we have such a problem in our, in our society, in our community with, you know, substance use. And I just wanted to put that out there. I think it's over the counter now.
Is there any other discussion about either of the policies for second reading? Yes, ma'am?
My other was along the lines of dosage, is, I just like what Ms. Walker referenced. So I don't know if there's going to be like a specific amount at each school that we would have of it onsite, or that wasn't specified in the policy, so.
So they are separate contained, the dosage is fully contained in the single-use.
Okay, so just a single-use?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have a first, and if there's no other discussion, we have a first and second. All in favor of passing these two policies, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Like sign. Passes 6-0. Carrying on to women's wrestling, Ms. Barnum.
Mr. Wildebohr.
Yes, ma'am.
I think there is a problem with my audio. I voted yes.
Okay.
And it's seven to, it's.
I will change that. Please, please signify that that was a 7-0 vote. Thank you, Ms. Crablestallin.
And I missed the other two votes because of audio problems, so I guess you'll have to just record those however you want.
Okay. Okay. We'll keep them as a six, unless you want to signify that you approve, then we'll just make them seven, or if you don't approve. Ms. Crablestallin? I think I've lost you again. Okay. We'll leave him at 6-0. Ms. Barnum.
Okay, I'm back. So first off, I want to express our excitement for having the opportunity for women's wrestling as a sanctioned sport. So we clearly have a lot of interest, and it's growing interest in other places as well. So while we have a lot of interest immediately within Laney High School, we have other interests and, and even more interest meetings happening in the near future. So one, as they really, truly are officially a co-ed sport at this point in time, we have been gathering information, and specifically from Athletic Director Fred Lynch, who's been at Laney. I joked that he's been at Laney for about 700 years, but it has really been a really long, long time, a very dedicated professional. And we've spoken many times about the possibilities or the, any unintended consequences for moving forward with a separate women's wrestling team. So, number one, we want to see this as a possibility. We understand the process is through a budget request, and that is understood also by Athletic Director Fred Lynch, that this was not a request that was lifted up in the budget process for the 2425 budget, but we want to be prepared for that in the 2526 budget, which we would call Budget 26, definitely as a consideration. And also by that time, further interest meetings are being held within Hogard and Hanover, and then I think Ashley will, will also follow suit, so that we will know if we're looking at four across the district or just one at Laney, and then what their opportunities for competition locally would be. So I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Ms. Barnum? Mr. McManus?
Thank you. So I understand exactly what's going on. Is part of this request for a designated coach, separate coach, to coach women's wrestling, and then the money is to support a wrestling program? Okay?
Any other questions?
That's not something we probably should not discuss. If they've got 19 girls, now travel, I don't know where they're going to go. I mean, I don't, I'm not against it, believe it or not, but where are they going to go? It's going to be, if you got to go to Charlotte, or you got to go, I mean, that's something, but I think we all discuss it.
Right. We have had, we've had some preliminary discussions kind of in the last several weeks about, again, what those unintended consequences would be if it's not a co-ed team and the opportunities for competition locally. So we really do want to have an opportunity to give our other high schools a moment to gather further interest and then generate that further along. This is still pretty new as a sanctioned sport through the High School Athletic Association.
Ms. Bradford, and then Ms. Walker.
What would you say to the question, the idea of a five-year women's wrestling What would you say to the question, the idea of a five-year women's wrestling allocation to see, probationary period, that's the right word, five-year probationary period to see if there is the interest, because I'm being told, and I'm way out of my league on this, in terms of knowing what the district does in terms of wrestling, but that there are some, you know, some highly qualified young ladies who want to wrestle and want to compete at the state level and could be a state champion, and so, you know, putting this off would deny them their opportunity, and I never want to do that with an athlete, I was an athlete all the way through high school. So what would you say to that idea, would you say that, you know, you don't want to have unintended consequences, so we just don't talk about it tonight, or, you know, Colonel John Henry gave us three options, you know, that we could look at, and I really think we should give it some depth here.
So, my first response would be, in talking about unintended consequences, if we established it aside from a co-ed sport, a standalone women's sport, my question still remains, and the High School Athletic Association isn't able to answer those questions for us yet, we've been going back and forth, but what would be our opportunity for competition locally, would we only be able to travel further along? Right now, our women wrestlers are participating in weekend tournaments that do add to their stats, but they're not a part of their conference season schedule, so we know that they're having to fill in, so, so when I talk about unintended consequences, I want to know what we're looking at, and I feel like we can be prepared for that, not to wait any longer, but to apply this to our very next budget process, because I think we might be looking at more than just Laney, we might be looking at the other high schools as well. So, this has come about, this interest and the amazing interest that we've had, has come about since the budget cycle in last year, and I think it needs to be ready for this budget cycle, because I do think it's going to be something that will be, will be hard to ignore, and so I'll go back to your first question, I would pose a question back, do we put any other sport or athletic team on a probationary period when we have enough athletes, I don't think it requires that, I think if we have the athletes and we put it through the funding process and we fund it, we don't put it on probation for one year or five.
And Ms. Walker?
I've thought about this a lot, and I've actually done some Google searches on Laney Women's Wrestling, and it's clear to me that they're wrestling at a very high caliber, and they're not just doing it co-ed, which, you know, I know that, I was reading the report here, I know it kind of checks a box that they're considered co-ed, but honestly, I just feel like, at least at Laney, they've got such a robust wrestling program, and that could be the case at all of them, but right now, I mean, I think the last stat I had read that they were up to, was it twenty-something female athletes? And I really just think that, I mean, it's past due time for Laney to have its own women's wrestling, and I know the numbers are low at the other schools, but, I mean, we sit up here and talk about how we want to give opportunity to female athletes, and I just think this is the absolute, it's screaming at us, we should be doing that, especially at Laney High School right now, I mean, they are top-notch, what, state champions, how many years have they been state champions, I mean, they've been a lot, I mean, and I think, I think they're probably past due time waiting to be their own team, and you think, if we're giving equal opportunity to our athletes, like, I mean, it's fine it's co-ed, they're all getting to wrestle, but like, the females, they have their own track as well, and they want to go to college and, you know, continue on their career at college, and I don't think they're able to do that as fairly as a co-ed, on a co-ed team, you know, and I know this is kind of newish, but it's not really, not for the female athletes that have been doing it for so long and competing at such a high caliber, and I think they deserve to have their own track, honestly, I mean, I'm reading some of these reports, like, it's, you know, of how well they're doing across the state, I just think it's, and I'm not, I'm pointing this at anybody in particular, I just think it's past due time that they have their own, I mean, and they got recognized last year from the North Carolina High School Association as its own sport, and I know we're talking about financial implications, I figure out we can work that out somehow, I feel like right now, well, what I've been told, which, you know, is obviously, I haven't actually spoke to myself, but assistant coach, I think at Laney is handling, helping the, you know, the women's wrestling right now, and I might be wrong, so if I'm wrong, I'm sorry, but I just think, I think it's past due time, I would support a motion for, you know, for them to have their own sport, and I don't know what that financially looks like yet, but I think they should be supported, I don't know how the other folks feel.
Are you going to make that motion?
I would like to make that motion, yeah, did you want to talk for, I mean?
I would like to make a comment when it's my turn.
Okay, Ms. Cravill.
We're in a motion yet, I guess we're on comment period.
I mean, I would agree along the sentiment, Ms. Walker, I understand that it's not in the budget cycle, so definitely coming into this coming-year budget cycle for all of them, all of our traditional high schools to have that as a possibility and explore that, and allow them to kind of, the manpower behind creating, getting the coach and stuff, but the financial implication of if we decided to make a motion, and I'll put it on the floor, to make a motion to allow Laney to have a women's sports wrestling team for this year, and I'll make that motion.
Did I already make that motion?
That's, it would just be for, I'm not saying for all the traditional high schools, I don't know if.
Is it a different motion than what I just did?
You made the motion, yeah.
Okay, then I'll second that.
Second it.
Yeah.
Let's let Ms. Cravill speak, Ms. Cravill?
Yeah, I agree with what everyone is saying about giving the female athletes at Laney High School and the wrestling program the opportunity, but folks, we are barely making it by with our staff at this point in time, and for those of us who were being very fiscally conscious with our money, we don't have the money, we didn't budget for the money, and so I don't think now is the appropriate time to force our acting, our interim superintendent to alter the budget to do this, we are not in violation of Title IX, because we are given, we are giving our women athletes the appropriate opportunities, and it's not sport by sport, and I think Mr. Henry explained that to us, it's overall, so we're not violating anything, and it's disappointing, but I think that the women will have to continue what they're doing now and have us put it into our budget for next cycle, that I support what Ms. Barnum was telling us.
Thank you, Ms. Cravill, Ms. Mason?
Well, I understand what Ms. Cravill is saying as far as that goes, my understanding is that ninety-two students have signed up for Laney Wrestling this year, and twenty-seven of them are girls, if there is only one main coach for them, they will have to make cuts, and how many of those cuts will be the females, and those females will lose those opportunities, that would be my concern, I want our girls to have the opportunity to be able to pursue this and get the scholarships and, you know, excel at something.
One thought would be if you would amend your motion to put a reasonable dollar amount on it, and say up to twenty thousand dollars, something of that nature, and then if I found that we couldn't make that work with that kind of price tag, we'd come back with a more complete listing for you of what it would cost, and that way you could marry both those two things together, would be my suggestion.
Ms. Bradford, Mr. McManus, and then Ms. Walker. And the original motion, so we'll get to you and you can answer that question.
You're going to have to read that out. I am not in favor of waiting until the next budget cycle, when you're an athlete, you know, now is now, so I'm in favor of doing either two or three, I'm not sure which one of these suggestions from Colonel Henry, or not suggestions, but course of action that he has given us, or now that we've got a possible amendment on the floor, but I want to go forward, we've got to protect at least the twenty-seven female students at this one school, you know, the Laney students have to have coaching, we want them to achieve, we want them to be the best they can be, and waiting until next year is just not going to cut it for me, so I'm in favor of whatever the motion is, but I'm not sure what it is.
The motion right now, the motion unless it's amended, which we'll get to Ms. Walker in a minute, is basically to follow number three, is what?
Is that what?
Are we asking me right now? I know.
Well, let's, Mr. McManus, speaking.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Honestly, to just, I think we proved it if we immediately found out what the cost would be, then we have something specific that we address, right now, no one can put a dollar amount on that, but I think that would be wise, I didn't say we're not concerned, continue to support it, but I think before we do anything, particularly now, we probably need, just so we can see what it's going to cost, that's A, and then B, nobody's here, but I'm not going to let it go till my last day, we pay seven million dollars out of our local fund budget for charter schools, and all I say is who supports charter schools? Charter schools, private schools, Christian schools, virtual schools, homeschooling, books, travel, seven million dollars, what would that do to our budget? We are financing private schools, and you know who did it? I'm sorry, but that's seven million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. McManus, Ms. Walker.
So.
First, could you make a comment, and then would you address whether or not you want to amend your motion?
Right, and make sure I heard it clearly enough, I would personally like to make it as standalone, I think, I think if we do something tonight, we can separate from co-ed to make it its own sport, I think that's essential in this discussion, because, I mean, co-ed's good and nice and everything like that, but it's clear, especially looking at Laney's program right now, how successful, how robust it is, that it needs its own, they need their own program, and they need to be able to compete in their own, you know, their own tournaments, or what's going to get them the most success in their college career, I mean, I mean, obviously up till now, they've been fine wrestling with and without, you know, the boys as well, but it's clear that it's gotten to that point, and if we can just clearly make it a standalone sport, like the North Carolina High School Association has done, I know the finance is a question mark, and we have to work that out, I mean, I'm happy to give up the rest of my money, I'm only here for three months, but you can have that, I don't know, whatever it takes, because I think, I mean, I've been reading some of these Star News reports, I mean, they're clearly star athletes, and, you know, they need, they need their own sport, and as far as the other schools are concerned, there's not as much, but the point is, it takes time to build a program, and Laney's clearly done that, and the interest is there, and I think you'll get that same interest if you, if you allow it to blossom, bloom, whatever it takes, and I know we've got to work out the finance part and the coach part, I mean, right now, they're existing, to Ms. Mason's point, right now, as a co-ed team with coaches helping them, and I just feel like the difference is, there's this own standalone program, so, so what's the, what's the motion?
The question was whether you.
Mr. Wildebor, may I speak again for my second time?
Yeah, but let her finish, the motion, the question, you'll be next, Ms. Cravill, the motion.
Thank you.
The next is basically to set a limit of twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars?
I think, you know, I don't think I want to push this to a dollar amount, I think that between the people working over there, myself, and we'll figure it out.
Okay.
We can just establish.
Okay, Ms. Cravill, why don't you do that and then we'll vote? Ms. Cravill?
So, yes, thank you, I'm not certain, I know what the exact motion is, but I do need to just go on record of saying that I still believe we are short EC teachers and teacher assistants, I believe we're short on bus drivers, I believe we are short on a number of other areas that we can't afford, and I am not in favor of adding another sport at this point in time, because an emergency on somebody's, a concern on somebody else's part does not constitute an emergency on ours, we should have planned better, the people in the wrestling world should have brought this to us last February, we don't have the money or the luxury of adding these new position, adding this new sport, when we can't even fund the teachers in the classroom and the support staff that we need to run our schools in the manner, the high-quality manner that we are accustomed to.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cravill, Ms. Walker.
Ms. Barnum.
Mr. Chair, I just had to throw it out there, because my colleague, I don't think the topic is germane, but I'm going to speak to it, we have been told by the interim superintendent that we are waiting on the twenty-day count and getting feedback from our staff, because we are going to be pushing back in positions to the schools based on the number of students, so I have to say that, as the public is listening, and we have one board member who's sharing that we don't have money, we have found, I think, what was the last rough estimate, 1.5 million, that we're pushing back into the schools for different positions, that this board has said, we are student-focused for the positions, so I have to speak to that, I don't believe this is relevant to the topic at hand, however, I have to speak to that because we're waiting on the twenty-day count.
Please watch your phone with me.
We have been told that, we have been sharing with that, we're getting the feedback from our staff, so that we can be the most effective with the increased positions that we can be, so I have to speak to that, that's it.
Ms. Walker, just something to say?
I agree, I feel like we can, we can do multiple things, and I agree, we can, I mean, the bigger conversation we're not really talking about, it's not germane to this topic, is getting more money from our legislators and our commissioners for our schools, that's the biggest thing, I've offered to give up whatever money I have to, you know, to a program that is obviously, it's waiting to be, it's waiting to be seen, and it's been long overdue, now, I'll speak to the, why it hasn't been brought to us, I mean, there's probably all kinds of reasons why it hasn't been brought to us by now, I mean, my kids weren't athletic kids, they were academic kids, but I know, I know how serious that is in schools, and, and we've seen, had a climate survey where people were a little bit nervous to speak out, so, there could be a lot of reasons why this hasn't come to us before now, but I'm not even thinking about the adult part of this, I'm thinking about the female athlete part of this, and I don't know, I don't know if how true this is, but I mean, they are telling us through, you know, different means that this is what they need, and I've been told, you know, potentially they could be upset about Title IX violations, so I would rather not go that route, to be honest, and I think if the state's recognizing it, and the school is doing such a good job, and the athletes are, that, you know, Title IX, in the essence, is, you know, giving equal opportunity to our female athletes, and I just think, co-ed's been fine, but clearly it's not anymore, and especially at Laney High School, so.
And I'm going to finish it, and then we'll call for the vote, I haven't spoken on this yet, but, Mr. Colonel Henry, thank you very much, you gave us a document here, and actually lists out three courses of action, one basically saying as standard at where we are, the second one is having separate men's and women's teams at all the high schools, and the third course of action is number three, and I think that actually is what Ms. Walker has encapsulated in her motion, sponsoring a women's team at Laney High School while maintaining co-ed teams at Hogard, Ashley, and New Hanover High School, this course of action would be frugal, and allow wrestling programs to recruit female wrestlers and strengthen their programs, and.
So, I have one caveat to that, and the only difference is that we recognize women's wrestling, even if they don't, right now, have a robust program at the other three schools, if we can recognize that it's its own sport, where we can eventually build these programs, I think that's essential to this conversation also.
I agree with you. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll? This is to honor Ms. Walker's motion.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebor?
Yes.
Ms. Cravill?
No.
And Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one, thank you, board members. We will continue on with new business legislative priorities, we'll turn that over to Ms. Barnhart. Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. McManus?
May I question?
Please.
Make a statement about what we just did?
Sure, absolutely.
We receive so much travel money, each board member does, those of us who are leaving in November, we can get a whole lot this time, but I have fifteen hundred dollars left, Ashley's over there, I always ask her what's in there, I have donated money to schools since I've been on the board, that's between me and the schools, to try to help, they're all low-performing, just for the record, but I have fifteen hundred dollars left of what we've received this year, and I would like to go on record that I would like to, if we have a wrestling girls program, that's fifteen hundred dollars, and if anyone on the board does that, that will cut that expense tremendously.
So. Thank you, sir, appreciate that, thank you, sir.
That's a challenge.
I like it. Legislative priorities, back over to Ms. Barnum.
Mr. Wildebor, point and order skipped over the New Hanover High School report.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, I apologize, I didn't update my sheet.
Yeah.
Come on up, if you wouldn't mind, please, give us that, I apologize again, I'm over two today.
She probably wanted to upset.
Yep.
And thank you, Ms. Lawrence, for coming up to give us an update.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. And thank you for the tour the other day.
Of course, I talked your ear off, your ears off, before I start, I'd like to acknowledge one thing, the successful first week of school that we saw at New Hanover High School, and that success is due to the tremendous efforts of Philip Sutton and his team, you know, we spent the summer, yes, absolutely, we spent the summer, they worked out some very well-thought-out ideas and. We spent the summer, they worked out some very well-thought-out ideas and strategies that were implemented over the summer, and that paved the way for the success that we saw in the transition into their new sunglasses approach school year. So appreciate Philip's perspective. There are not enough words to describe what a tremendous asset Philip Sutton is, Chris Haney and his staff. It is a privilege to work with them, and this project and this process is better because of who they are and what they bring to the table. So I have, I could talk all night just about those guys. But while they are now focusing their efforts on education of the students and operations of the schools, the construction is still ramping up and going forward, and that's what I wanted to talk with you about today, give you a little update. The interior demolition work is well underway in the main building. We're at least, I think, about halfway finished, maybe a little bit more with the removal of the sheet rock and plaster. And as, just as a reminder, we're removing the sheet rock and plaster so that we can see the condition of that multi-wide structural brick wall that is that south wall of Hanover. Next week, we're meeting with a team that specializes in the restoration of historic buildings. They're gonna lay eyes on the wall and start to inform what our next steps will be in the repair of the wall. So very excited about that. We are shoring up the eastern and westernmost walls of those classrooms that bookend either side of the main building. That shoring will be completed in the next week and a half to two weeks. And once that shoring is in place, we will recommence with excavation along the front elevation of the building. We temporarily pause that to allow the shoring to be put in place. And of course, the purpose of excavating along the foundation is to expose the foundation and to implement the engineered design to stabilize the foundation along the southern wall and then on those flanking eastern and western walls. And I'm happy to report, mobiles are on site. Mobile units were delivered Friday evening, the first one was. It was moved into place this afternoon. While we've been meeting, the second unit arrived on site. They'll be putting that into place tomorrow. And then on, I lose track of days because of Labor Day, on Thursday, the final unit will be arriving. So those will all be put into the place where they're gonna be located. And at the conclusion of this week and into next week, the foundations will be put in place underneath those units. They'll tie them down. They will unite the two pieces. Each unit came in two sections. They'll unite those, tie them together, and then immediately on the heels of that, our contractor will be tying in utilities to those units. One of the biggest and probably most unlikely components, when you think about all this, one of the biggest components is the installation of the aluminum deck and ramp system. That alone is gonna take about a week. I don't yet have the arrival date for the installation of the installers or what date they'll be there to begin that. It will be, we believe, in the next two weeks. Our goal is to have those units occupied ASAP this month. So everybody is working to that end and working very rapidly. I would like to acknowledge appreciation for the New Hanover County Inspections Department. They have been such a team member in this process. They are bending over backwards. They are sending inspectors out on moments' notice, literally. I called today and they sent an inspector out within 10 minutes. They are a very integral part of keeping us moving forward and keeping us moving forward rapidly. So I'd like to thank them. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I've touched on the highlights. Yes, sir?
Ms. McManus?
Thank you. This is not to be negative, but I just interested. You talked about somebody coming in about how to do antiquity restorations, including cement. Is this before they do the assessment of the entire building?
It is.
I think the $300,000, $400,000 assessment?
Yes, and I appreciate you mentioning that. So we had just a little bit of background on where we are with that process. In Sunday's paper, there was a request for qualifications that was published, and we are receiving qualifications from design teams. On September the 13th, we will be receiving those, and then we'll be selecting, bringing to you all the selection of who that team will be to engage in that study. So we have not started that study yet. This is in advance of that. But, you know, the good news is, is that it's not a wasted effort because what we're learning right now will be a part of informing that report.
Any other questions?
Mr. Wilderborg?
Ms. Crable?
Yes, so to that point, Ms. Lawrence, the, are we sending out, did we send out an RFP or an RFQ for the companies that will be doing the facility assessment?
Sorry, Ms. Crable, could you repeat that question?
Are we using the RFP or RFQ process in order to select the firm that will do our facilities study?
Yes, ma'am, we are. So that was advertising Sunday's paper. It's also on our website. So we are...
Okay, and so, to that point, about how, I thought I read, or I thought you told us that it was gonna take about, you know, six to eight months minimal to get that whole study done. Are we also working on a parallel plan that if the study says that the building is not viable for reconstruction, are we gonna, are we thinking about a plan on what to do if we get into it that far and we're not able to proceed?
At this time, our marching orders are to study the campus and do an evaluation through the funding that was authorized by the county. We're gonna be studying every square inch of that campus, the building systems, whether structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, the architectural integrity, the accessibility. We're gonna be studying that. And that is, when we get to the end of that study, and that study will include a cost estimate for what it would take to bring those buildings and that campus up to current standards, when we get to the end of that study is when we would have the conversation of how much will it cost to bring it up to standard versus how much it might cost and time that might be involved to create a new campus. So, Ms. Crable, until we get to the end of that study, we won't have the information to be able to make a decision about whether or not the campus should be maintained or should be considered for new construction or other opportunities on site.
McManus?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Second part of the question, and again, not to throw any daggers. Thank you for saying that about Mr. Sutton, because he, I worry about him. And I've known him since he was that big. I worry about him. His staff's been unbelievably supportive as well. They've had rooms moved, they've had, particularly when the mobiles didn't show up. My understanding, you can correct me, someone here will know, 60 students have been allowed to transfer out of New Hanover to another high school to create more, and I think Julie said it, they put it by corner, because we lost classroom space. Am I correct? Is it 60 students?
I have offered a transfer to over 100 students.
Over 100?
Yes. The number is pretty significant.
And where do they go? Where are they going to school?
They go to any of the other high schools, so they might be going...
And so how many are going, which high school's getting most of them?
I wouldn't say most, but when I reviewed the numbers, maybe two or three weeks ago, and there were still some that needed to accept their seat, many went to Laney, several more went to Hoggard, and Ashley did receive the least number of transfer requests.
So, and the parents responsible for their transportation, et cetera?
Yes, and it's for one year only.
For one year. So they will have, they will have to go back in a year, and why I say that is, I understand New Hanover's enrollment, while the building's being repaired, we also gotta worry about student body. We've lost 60 students. And most of those kids played a big part in success at New Hanover High School. And so, and Mr. Sutton has said, or I probably wouldn't repeat it, but doing his advanced placement classes and doing his honors classes is really difficult, losing 60 students. And so I just wanna make sure that we understand that the building, that's one, but we've also gotta protect his student body. And I'm worried about losing all those students to other schools, and then they're not gonna wanna come back, and I don't know who's gonna be on the board after the election. But I hope they will not let those kids not have to go back unless they've moved their house to the district to protect New Hanover High School, if that makes any sense.
Walker?
Thank you.
So, I just, just to reiterate, the timeline for the units is by the end of the month, hopefully, best case.
I hope prior to that, yes.
Right, or prior. The repairs, did we talk about the repairs that are on right now? Is that looking like till the end of the year for the front?
Right now, we are under contract through the end of November for the repairs.
Okay. And last question, you brought up historical. Have you been in contact with the, any of the historical?
We are officially not, Hanover is not a historic building. It's in a historic overlay, so we don't have any federal requirements that we have to meet to do improvements. But we're bringing in folks that specialize in older buildings, often historic buildings.
Don't know why, I just assumed anything that was 100 years old was historic, but I don't know.
Has to have the designation.
It has to have the designation, okay, all right.
It's not in the historic district, it's just outside.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have another question.
Ms. Crable?
All right, so I don't know, this is definitely not in Ms. Lawrence's purview, but are there any groups of students that are spending an inordinate amount of time in Brogdon Hall?
Well, I'm sorry, I'll have to get an answer to that question. I'm not sure. Do you mean all their classes in Brogdon, or...
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, ESL students by chance, or students that have no place to go because there's no homeroom, their teacher travels. So I know that during the first week of school, there were some issues where we had to, you know, figure out where, figure out the traveling schedule. And I have heard from several ESL parents that their students spent pretty much, like, the whole week in Brogdon Hall.
Well, I was over there on day one and went to Brogdon Hall specifically, because that's where I found Philip. I didn't see that many students there, but I'll get an answer to that question for you.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Anything else? No, thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Thank you very much. And now, I'll get back on the right place, legislative priorities, and that will be Ms. Barnhart. Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The legislative committee met, I think, in June, and we narrowed down some bullets for the board to consider for adoption of a legislative agenda. The topics you can see listed, I'm not gonna read them to you unless you want me to elaborate on them. But what the thought process of was, when we met together as a committee, we discussed bringing them before you guys, and any of the ones that we wanted to approve, and my recommendation would be to approve them all, the, our senior staff, excuse me, our senior staff, whoever the subject matter expert, would help to elaborate and align this to our strategic plan so we could have a formalized legislative agenda on behalf of New Hanover County Schools. Since the time that we met locally, this list got compiled from suggestions of you all had given to me, as well as our senior staff. The list could go on for pages and pages and pages, so we tried to condense it to around, roughly 10.
Mr. McManus?
I noticed, these are not done by first, second, third...
Oh, thank you for that clarity. No, this is, this is not a priority list of legislative agendas, or thank you for that clarification.
I see Isaac Bear College, high school building. Okay, I was chair of that committee for quite a while, to the point that several administrators, UNCW, including the chancellor, superintendent, we all took many, many tours. And the purpose was to pick out a place to build a high school, which we did. We did. It was given to us, I mean, denoted. By my understanding, which, and I wish Eddie was here, but he's drawn about three different blueprints for an Isaac Bear High School over the last five or six years.
There was funding in the last budget cycle from the General Assembly, and there is a schematic...
But since you're the legislator for Reno, more so than a lot of us, my understanding, the last meeting I had with a lot of people at the university was that the local county commissioners had to also contribute a considerable base sum for the legislature would commit. And are you aware of that? And if so, can you tell me the amounts at this point?
There has not been an amount discussed in particular. What is a unique opportunity here, and you'll see that we had discussed having a capital facility plan for the next three years, and the board as a whole is already kind of in that ballgame of the bond financed and, what's the capital, the third, the third one, of having that long-term, long-range plan so we can open dialogue with the county commissioners to see the longevity of the things we need, not only for the capacity issues in our schools, but also for the renovations. So the unique opportunity with Isaac Bear is on multiple fronts. One, the General Assembly had given, I think it was a million dollars, to actually design the building, which would increase capacity of Isaac Bear, doubling the size of students. So closer to 500 students we'd be able to serve versus roughly the 200-ish, 20-ish that we get to now. But because it would be a partnership with UNCW and the county and potentially the state, we can also use private donors. And so that conversation has not started, but if it's, if it is an opportunity that the board wants to consider as a legislative priority, that conversation would be a joint conversation, because the funding could come from multiple sources. It would not solely come from our county. This is not, if this is something that the board considers adopting, it's not committing us to, we're going to fund this over New Hanover High School per se, because that, we don't wanna do that.
That's where I was going with it.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the concern for it and open honesty. But the reality is, if we do open this dialogue of collaboration, we have a unique opportunity to increase the capacity of students that we're serving and change the, I mean...
Well, Isaac Bear's outstanding. I mean, there's no doubt about it. I'm just, though the money's where we are, the difficulty we had with getting money, the endowment's still there worth billions.
Right. Well, that's where, and that's where the discussion of the capacity facility planning really came into play, Mr. McManus, whenever we were discussing as a committee, and myself and Ms. Bradford and Ms. Walker are on there, we talked about having that long-term, really broader understanding on our behalf. So when we are talking with our county commissioners, we are, we know a better target focus as doing so.
Bradford and Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And then Ms. Crable?
And then Ms. Crable?
Two parts. Ms. Barnhart, is there a timeline for when we're gonna go roaring out of the gate with this? And second of all, coming down, I mean, we all support raises for teachers. I think if you can explain 15 to 21, currently nonexistent, a little, a little bit more, it would help. But in the event that we cannot be successful in that argument, can we also argue for increasing the per-student allotment? You know, just give them one more thing, you know, if we can't get this one, can we get this one? And it was, I thought that was part of what I'd sent in. Is it there?
I'm happy to elaborate that, and Dr. Burns said he would also be happy to as well. So when we talked about teacher raises, absolutely, we can, we can make this be less broad if you would like. If it's the will of the board, that's absolutely fine. The justification of discussing the 15 to 20-year range is currently, on the state level, there is no increase for our teachers. And so that was an acknowledgement, when talking to my colleagues, talking to senior staff, that that would be a target focus. I know the General Assembly had focused on initial teacher pay for the last few years, which came out high priority, and this was one of the unintended consequences, in my opinion. And so bringing it to the forefront of attention of saying, this would be a great thing to target focus. I'll since add, since we last met as a local committee, you guys had nominated me to be on the NCSVA State Board Legislative Committee. We met, and that was, you should have seen it in your survey that you took, that was one of their priorities as well. And so this is an issue that has been advertised and talked about in lots of different circles. And I'll let you know more after we meet again next week, if it made the legislative agenda for that.
Walker?
So, yeah, I personally thought the last legislative meeting was a pretty good meeting. I think we listened to the folks that had reached out and said what they thought priorities were. And keep in mind, a lot of these are legislative-level discussions, and more so than county commission discussions, because a lot of the funding and the changes have to be done in our legislature. I mean, looking at calendar flexibility, that's one of the biggest ones. But the Isaac Bear building too, I mean, I was on the ad hoc committee as well. You know, it was nice to get the million dollars at the same time. And if I'm not mistaken, we have an MOU with them, that we have a certain amount of time we have to reach to get the funding, or the deal is kinda off, because, I mean, they've given us a piece of land, well, not given it to us, but they said you can build it here. We haven't worked out the details of, I mean, we're gonna have to get funding, joint funding from the state, because UNCW is a state, you know, entity, and then we're gonna have to come up with some of it too somehow. But it's clear, Eddie told us last time, that those buildings are, those trailers, learning cottages, whatever you wanna call... cottages, whatever you want to call them, they're at their end of their lifespan, and those students need to be in an actual building. And UNCW, I think, is ready to, to do something, but we, we must revisit that, I think. I don't know, to Ms. Barnhart's point, this was the, the ideas that we all talked about at the meeting, but if we have to organize them in some kind of priority list, that might be a good idea. I feel like this a lot to take to legislators and go give us to us. I don't know how we would rank them, I don't know if, you know, the, the committee has any idea on that. But they're all, they're all important. I just, I, I wouldn't know how we would go, I mean, go to legislators with it unless, you know, we, we meet again and talk about it, and so...
Everybody take three.
Yeah, everybody take three, oh, gosh.
Grayville.
Um, yeah, a couple of questions, that's one of my point, one of my questions was, who is this legislative agenda targeted to? Our county commissioners, the endowment, or to our, the General Assembly?
Thank you. This would be something that New Hanover County Schools would choose to adopt, and so in conversations, we would be able to use any of those levels that you just described. So, it would not be addressed specifically to General Assembly members only, or county commissioners, or private investors, or whatever. It would be just an open, these are the things that we'd like to have conversations on.
Okay, and then the Be Pro, Be Proud truck, I, I love when that comes, but have we surveyed the other schools in the southeast region before we go and lobby for something that they may not be really in on?
Okay, I, thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, what we had discussed as a committee is bringing these ideas before the Board, and any and all of the ideas that the Board would like to adopt as legis, not necessarily in a specific priority, I, I don't think a ranking priority is necessary. Other legislative agendas that I have been privy to do not rank them, so I think it's just purely talking points, and different people have different passion about the talking points you're going to discuss. The, when I brought this up to the committee, the Wilmington Home Builders Association is advocating, they have lobbyists, I have not, I'm not part of their lobbyists, but they have paid lobbyists that they openly were discussing with me, they said, Ms. Barnhart, we are advocating for a, a truck specifically for the southeastern region, would you guys support a resolution that you would value that? And I said, I'll bring it before the Legislative Committee and before our Board, but I know that we, as a school system, love it, and I, I know you and I have volunteered on multiple occasions in it, and it's booked up for two years in advance. So, what the idea was from the Home Builders Association individual that I spoke with, was that this would allow the truck to be present in the southeastern region, and we would have access to it, access to it more often. And so, for my committee, for my Board members, who might be unaware, the Be Pro, Be Proud truck allows you to have some hands-on career and technical education experience, and it's been at our career fairs and exposure. It's really cool, I'm a terrible welder, but I taught it last time I was in the truck. And so, I was like, this would be a great opportunity, because currently, the state has two for the entire state to utilize, and because we have advocated for it on multiple occasions, and we have some people in our, in our community that thinks it's so great, they want to see more of it come back to our community. So, this would, the southeastern region, I think it said, Pender, Brunswick, New Hanover, but one of the ideas that we had discussed as the Legislative Committee is after this gets approved, and be written up by our senior staff to support with our strategic plan, we could come back together and then reach back out to our counterparts in Pender and Brunswick County, and anything that they also want to jump on and say, hey, we support this too, then that could be an allied partnership of, of the southeastern region of saying, hey, all of us are saying this area is a top interest, because when it comes to the legislature, the more people that are on board with the same consistent messaging, the more likely something will happen, so.
Okay, and one last question, didn't we just get approval for 30 of our schools to be in the CEP program? Do we need to keep that on our legislative agenda?
I'd like to see it stay until we get all of them, personally, but that's up to, that's the Board, I don't care.
Dr. Barnes.
A couple of things. One, as the HR guy, I'm really pleased to see a lot of these are pivoting around the allotments from the state. And those are a critical pressure point issue, so I'm pleased to see so many of those on there. Wanted to say, one good thing, and one thing, it's probably my fault, that raises for teachers from year 15 to year 24, not 21, and the state has decided to support a funding in arrears for the funding model, so that one is resolved and taken care of.
Okay. All right. So, I would entertain a motion to accept these unless we want to change them. Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to just make one little comment, since you appointed me to the Calendar Committee for the first time, I am looking forward to lobbying for Calendar, because I am hearing a lot, so...
I mean, I don't think there's anybody that would argue that point, well, there's maybe one person.
One person. There's one person.
Leave that alone.
Okay, so, I move that we accept this list with the change from 21 to 24 on raises for teachers to 15 to 21, accept it as it is.
Well, and also, Dr. Barnes just brought up to support a funding in arrears, it's already been taken care of.
Oh, yeah, and I meant that, strike that one too.
Okay. I'll second that, any further discussion?
My only thing I would add, Mr. Chairman, is once our staff gets it all typed up pretty to align to bring it back for, for the Board, just for information purposes.
Very good. All right, all of those in favor of the legislative priorities as listed, as amended, please signify by, Mr. McManus.
I got my comment, don't forget to include our staff when we start doing this, we...
Authority included staff.
We're trying to listen to staff, so these, whatever's on your prioritize, let's make sure we involve our staff in some shape or fashion.
Staff brought these to us.
Yeah, I think she's already spoken with staff.
Yeah, staff's the one, staff gave this list.
This is not in my head, this is not in my head.
Yeah, yeah, these, this is from direct staff.
All, all, all in agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Good, thank you, Ms. Grayville. All opposed, signify by saying the same sign. Pass is seven, zero, and I see the young gentleman standing, sitting out here, ready to go, he's been waiting patiently. Thank you for being here, Mr. Foles. We will turn it over to sustainability in schools, natural land care. Evan Foles is with us, we appreciate you being here and wait, waiting very patiently for this. Mr. Foles.
Of course, thank you for having me. It's, it's an honor to be here and discuss this issue, that's been a long time coming, I've met with most of you, so I'm grateful for the time that you've given to pay attention to this. I'm hoping that this is a, not a one-off moment, but more of a conversation, and I wanted to start with the issue of pesticides at schools, specifically on school grounds. So, couching this in natural land care, I don't know if I have a clicker, if, I just need to ask for the next slide. So, quickly, wanted just to give you some brief background, just to make sure that you, I don't think that I'm here passively, I've been working on these issues for over 20 years. I serve as an elected supervisor of New Hanover Soil and Water Conservation District, grateful that your Board recognizes the synergy that's, and potential that's there in terms of the value we can bring to kids about the living world. The living world happens to be absent from schools in a really critical way, and one of the ways that that happens is this issue that I'm here to talk to you about tonight. I'm the founder of Be Agriculture, it's a consulting platform, work on these issues globally, and it, it's one of those things where I, I've seen this at the front lines and to the depths of, of what's known, and I could not work on this issue locally. I have two kids in the school system. I'm primarily here for, for my kids, but for all kids and for all of us. I know that all of you are here for that as well, so I just want to tell you, I don't think this is a contentious issue. It's potentially controversial, I don't really know to who, but it's a difficult thing to raise. And so, I just want to acknowledge that we're on the same team here, and I, and I'm also here to say that it's extremely difficult to introduce ideas like this to the school system. It's, it's frankly unacceptable, it's not all of your faults, I've spoken to boards over the last 15 years about these issues. So, in a lot of ways, I'm, I'm here in gratitude that you've given me some time to speak to it. I'm here to ask you directly to be a champion for our children, for children's health, this is an opportunity to do that. I'm here to reference the common sense of this issue, in relation to the burden of proof, I, I'm aware that you guys could ask someone from Extension Service, or from the state, or from wherever officially they need to come from, that would be able to stand here and say that the school system is abiding by state regulations. And so, I'm here to say directly that state regulations are not enough, and I'll illustrate that here. There's really no one that's going to come and make this right for us, it involves us. We have to think for ourselves and act for ourselves here, and ultimately, this is an opportunity. So, you know, in that spirit, I, I wanted to just read a quick passage and first define what a pesticide is. You know, pesticide encapsulates, "Any substance or mixture of substances intended for preventing, destroying, repelling, and mitigating any pest." The takeaway here is that it's not just for pests themselves, it's herbicides, insecticides, nematicides, it's a catch-all term. This quote is really important, this is from the American Academy of Pediatrics, it says, "Children encounter pesticides daily and have unique susceptibilities to their potential toxicity. Evidence demonstrates associations between early life exposure to pesticides and pediatric cancers, decreased cognitive function, and behavioral problems." I just want to highlight that these are high-level issues in our school system, and in most school systems, so just wanted to highlight that. The kicker here is recognizing and reducing problematic exposures will require attention to current inadequacies in medical training, public health tracking, and regulatory action on pesticides. What, what this is saying is that, that the dangers that we're inflicting on children are known, that the experts are playing catch-up, and that we need to think for ourselves. So, in highlighting that, it was really important, just from a big-picture standpoint, to recognize that roughly a fifth of our state drains to us. The amount of conventional agriculture that happens in this zone is extraordinary. We have no voice in this conversation. Part of this dialogue is that, you know, this is not just a school system challenge, this is the city of Wilmington, it's also New Hanover County. I'm working with them as well, don't want you to feel singled out, we need a voice in this conversation. The only way to accomplish that is to stand in integrity and lead by example. You, you can't go complaining about the pollution that's reaching us and then not be in integrity to that reality. So, it's, it's really important, and just to highlight the local reality, the county has an extremely toxic land care protocol, the city does as well, you know, example, they're a B City USA, and they spray neonicotinoids, which is basically the culprit for colony collapse disorder. There's a complete lack of integrity around how we manage pesticide applications in land care. I'll point you to the chronic diseases on the left, it's devastating, it's beyond devastating, it's, it's frankly a tragedy and an emergency at the highest level, and these chronic diseases are directly attributed to these chemicals that were on the right. This list here is not just one that I made up, this is literally from the New Hanover County Schools website. This is, these are the, the raw chemicals that we are, some on it, not, not the school system, contractors are spraying onto school grounds. So, just sit with that list, it runs off the page, it's really a tragedy. This is, uh, some images sent to me by a gentleman that lives next to Wrightsville Beach Elementary School. The contractors that are hired by the school system have been killing his grass through the fence for years, it started to happen again after a handshake deal ran its course. The highlight here is not that we're killing someone's grass through their chain-linked fence, it's that we're spraying around up indiscriminately down the walking paths at Wrightsville Beach Elementary School. There's studies that directly show that children, that the chemicals they can carry on their shoes are, are, create these afflictions and these chronic diseases. So, just a, a really visceral image of what's actually happening. There's a natural park pilot alive at the city of Wilmington, I've got grant funds from Stony Field Organic, and we're two years into that process. These are the organizations that are on board to support the school system, you're not alone in, in thinking through this, there is some serious support, including myself, I'm here in whatever capacity would be, be helpful, there's over 100 years' experience here. So, I, I don't want to keep you guys forever on this issue, but I want to bring it to a point here. Here's, this is the ask, I don't think it's too much. I don't see Mr. Anderson here this evening, but I met with Operations a couple months ago, and I was, I saw the documents that are supposed to communicate compliance with the North Carolina School Children's Health Act. If you're not aware of that act, it's, it's actually kind of amazing that exists, in my opinion, given the status quo on this issue, but, but it's, it says some particular things that have not been happening in the school system. One is annual notification to parents that these applications are happening, that has not been done. Notification that you can get on a list, the law says that parents need to be notified once a year, and if there's transparency in what's being applied and when, which there should also be happening, that they, they're to be notified 72 hours before a, an extra application. You can get on a list, not unlike the mosquito list that you can be notified on, parents have not been being notified of that. The other thing that's out of alignment is that the school system does divulge the school, the pesticides used on ballfields, that is transparent on the website, what is not transparent is what's being used on school grounds. These things are in direct violation to a North Carolina law. So, I've respectfully met with Eddie Vertonge to make him aware, he has come around, they've made a commitment to get into compliance, just sending the signal that I have not seen any communication to my, me as a parent, and I'm just challenging the Board to make sure that that's been followed through with. From the Board of Education standpoint, I, I'm asking some form of acknowledgement of what we're actually doing, that's public and transparent, so that parents can actually be educated from the school system of what's happening. It's, it's, we can't sit back and allow these things to happen. I'm not sure where my screen went there, if I could get back up. Thank you. Just, and just a general statement to the school system, you know, commit to an organics-first policy, this is not an exercise to be on a soapbox of organics, to suggest we need to ban things left and right, to take away the, the professionalism that may be required in difficult circumstances around land care, it's simply to not use them as a first, first effort. And this, this is the precedent of how it's done in other school systems nationally, this is not a new thing, and there are, again, policy opportunities to take advantage of templates to, to help guide this, this whole process. One of the things that came out of the meeting with Operations was a potential opportunity around a natural school pilot, it was proposed to be Wrightsville Beach Elementary School, I've been told by Operations that they have stopped spraying pesticides at that school, and that they are interested in trialing a sample of a natural product that I have en route, that I'll coordinate with them to use. So, just letting y'all know, there is an, an opening from Operations to be receptive to this, which I was very encouraged by, even to the extent, if you're not aware, you're in the third of the fourth year of a contract for land care. So, I was told that there is a way to write the next RFP to ensure some of the things that we'd like to see, given the lack of capacity of land care professionals in this town to perform them, which is its own issue. Again, I'm, I'm there as a liaison, if that's, if that's helpful. And then finally, you know, the reality here is that I've been having this conversation, and I think other people have as well, there's no one in the school system that can actually have this conversation with me, and on the level that needs to happen. And, and I would couch that not just on pesticides, but in regards to sustainability, just a, a word around, you know, garbage to gardens, a program that you guys have incubated and that's now been accepted at the county level, you know, make the, make the connection that started at a school, right? That's now, goal is 10 schools by the end of the year, could literally solve the landfill emergency, the children could, for New Hanover County, it's incredible. But there's a green team at, at a lot of schools, there's gardens, there's composting. I don't think, I know Soil and Water doesn't know, but I don't think the school system knows, has done an audit of what's happening at these schools. The reason I'm raising this is that this interest is there, the responsibility of the school system to meet that interest is paramount. So, that, that idea of, I, I hope that there wouldn't be any controversy in that, I think it is a win-win-win for everyone, politically, parents, kids, et cetera. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any, appreciate your time and attention to the matter.
Any questions, Board members? Mr. McManus.
I'd just say, thank you for presenting us with some things that obviously everybody needs to consider.
Thank you, absolutely.
Bradford.
I really thank you for bringing us this slide number five, that talks about the chronic diseases. I just have been amazed, I listened to a candidate speak recently, who's involved in environmental law and health, and with one in four kids having allergies, one in eight kids having asthma, one in eight kids having attention deficit, one in 30... kids having asthma, one in eight kids having attention deficit, one in 36 children having autism, one in two having cancer, diabetes, one in four, obesity, one in three. We have to do whatever we can do now and keep doing it to where those numbers start to reverse. It's a huge epidemic in this country, and, and I'm just thrilled that you brought those numbers to us, thank you.
And I can't recall, it's not in the slides, but I believe you've mentioned that some of these can attribute to some of the behavior issues that we've seen as well. Do you have any numbers on those?
You know, I don't, that was in the quote from the American Pediatric Society, so I would recommend checking on that level. And, you know, if I, if I may just plant a seed with y'all, in the charter of the protection of our children, is to challenge New Hanover County Public Health on this issue. There is no excuse to spray poisons around children, and there's no justification for that. And, as I mentioned, the reality of being able to fall back on what law says in regards to how like, regulation, how it's legal to spray these chemicals, is insufficient. So, I think it would be very interesting and behoove the board to ask Public Health, I know it's difficult to posture as public health officials in the world that we've created, these things are common sense, so I'd ask you to ask them to speak to this issue, and I think that might help guide some reality around it. Ms. Barnhart?
Evan, thanks for being here. I know that the county approved in their budget as sustainability manager, do we know if that position has been filled at this time, or not yet?
I'm aware, I think that it has been, but I don't think it's been announced.
Okay, all right. Because that's, I think, I think it's going to take some collaboration on our part, and I think when you're talking about the buy-in and the change of the idea, we definitely need to be partnering with you guys and our sustainability manager doing so. But do you have like a proposal template, template of different changes that implement, that we can implement with, with the new products things, versus just saying, you know, let's not use pesticides, or like, what's the criteria, what's, what should the new criteria look like? And for me, after hearing this, I think it falls in line, great to be a pilot at our green schools that we do have, and you mentioned that, because I think that, that's already been ingrained there, but how do we help ingrain it elsewhere? If you have a template or something?
Yeah, short answer is yes, there's a lot of precedent around this. Beyond pesticides, one of the organizations at the table for the natural park pilot at the city level is a 30-year-plus organization in Washington DC, they were integral in the organic standard certifications, have deep experience of working with all of these different capacities. So, I would say yes on the policy level there. Osborne Organics, who's also at the table for the natural park pilot, is the agronomy end of it, and would be capable of shepherding any sort of land care company that may need some experience on how to engage this. Agree with your assessment that, you know, we need to take sustainability seriously. One quick word on that is that the only expression of sustainability in southeastern North Carolina, I should say in New Hanover County, is at the city level. A sustainability manager's focus is on building efficiency in electric vehicles, nothing about the living world. Meanwhile, we're spraying pesticides on playgrounds. So, what's really critical is to define what sustainability means and be, have it be inclusive to life. Because if we come down to some idea that this is a set of scenario instructions that's, you know, ushering in electric vehicles, we're not hitting the mark, we're not making the impact that we really want to make. So, I think there's a tremendous opportunity to lead the way in our region, and I think kids can do that naturally. And, and again, I even think that if, in concert with public health, there's an ability to measurably increase children's capacity to focus over time, and I would suggest that a long-term study to validate this would be a precedent that the world would want to see. So, I see a ton of opportunity here, given the sentiment that I'm hearing, and I'm really grateful that y'all see the gravity of this, and I just want you to know that I'm here to help if you need it.
After having some excellent conversations with Evan, and I would like to propose that we create a sustainability committee, and before I make the motion, I want to kind of go into a little bit of some of the discussion that we had and kind of what I compiled. I would like it to be an advisory committee, to meet bi-monthly or quarterly, with members consisting of a board member, a subject matter expert, groundskeeper, those who are boots on the ground, a soil and water representative, a parent, sustainability manager, and a teacher, with the goals of auditing all the school grounds, noting which schools have composts, gardens, green teams, that have parents, teachers, and students as members, and what pesticides are being used. Second goal of defining what sustainability is for the district. A third goal of a discussion of adding to the home economics or hospitality or elementary science curriculum gardening or learning the natural world. Number four, connecting schools with resources, volunteers from the community to support schools in upkeep of gardens in summer months and in other projects. Number five, making recommendations on non-toxic pesticides, and then six, that, that pilot project with an elementary school. So, my motion, I'm going to make a motion that we create an advisory sustainability committee.
First and second, any further discussion?
I'd like to see us-
Yes, private comment.
Okay, Ms. Bradford and then Ms. Crable.
I'd like to see us acknowledge that we're going to comply with the North Carolina School of Children's Health Act. I think we could roll that into it.
Yeah, just add that one thing, that we as a board acknowledge that we want to, we want to, whatever it takes to get us in compliance with the state law, the health act would be advisable. So, if I could amend your motion to add that?
Sure, I'll second that amendment.
Okay, so, Ms. Crable?
Yes, I agree with making sure that we do all that we can to provide safe campuses for our students, but before we jump into this, I want to hear from Dr. Barnes and from the Operations Department to see if we have the availability of our staff who serve on this committee, and a board advisory committee is one that the chair is actually a district employee, and a board member is just a member of the committee. So, we would obviously have to put that into our policy 20230, just like we need to do that with several others of teams. So, I'd like to hear from Dr. Barnes and the Operations Department to see if we are out of compliance, and, and if we are in compliance, that needs to be stated for the record, that we are not violating the-
Hey, Dr. Barnes?
I will, obviously Eddie is not here tonight, but I will make sure that he and I go over this North Carolina School of Children's Health Act to make sure we're complying. I think some of that is also, we do outsource a good amount of our work to other agencies, so that's something that's just going to take a little time to, to look at. I'm looking over this study right here, so I, you know, I'm educating myself because we're going. Obviously, I do want to say that, of course, as we've consolidated our central office, I'm going to need to look for who the right person would be, because we're all sort of taking on additional duties, but, you know, obviously at the will of the board, but it's just going to take me a little time to get up to speed on, on some of this because it's new stuff.
All right, we have an amendment in front of us, and that amendment is to add Ms. Bradford's, oh, Ms. Walker, I'm sorry, I didn't notice your name.
My head's in the way, it's kind of hard to see.
Honestly, we need a little buzzer thing.
I know, I know. No, I just wanted to make comment, I mean, I've been listening to everybody's conversation, I think this definitely aligns with what our county is trying to do, in some ways, obviously not exactly the same. Sustainability is a big deal. I'm, I'm not against it. Obviously, we do need to evaluate what we're doing on it. If outside agencies are not abiding by our health laws, then we definitely need to fix it. No, I'm interested to see what we find out, I think it would be a good thing.
Okay, we have an amendment in front of us to add-
Acknowledge, to come into compliance with the North Carolina School of Children's Health Act. Come into compliance with the North Carolina Health, North Carolina-
Okay, this is only for that, that amendment? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? Carrie, seven zero. Now, would you read your main motion again, please?
I just-
I did not write that, try to write all of that.
I make a motion that we create an advisory sustainability committee.
Okay, and it was first and second on that, now it is amended motion because we've added amendment. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Waterborne, Mr. Waterborne.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the power, the, before we vote to have this, who is going to be making, collecting, creating the criteria for board or the committee membership to make sure that we have the teachers and the community and all the people that Ms. Mason listed have credentials and to be, to be making decisions as an advisory?
Ms. Mason, would you like to speak to that, please?
The plan is to look at policy and to look at the universal application and make those adjustments there.
That's not what I asked, I asked about how are we going to make sure that they have, what criteria do they have to even have? Because I could sign up to be on this committee and have no expertise in this area at all.
I think she's listed out specific, could you read it?
I can reread the, the-
You listed out specific people, but not just-
So, the list, Ms. Crable, Ms. Crable, the list is a board member, a subject matter, a subject matter expert, a groundskeeper, soil and water representative, a parent, sustainability manager, and a teacher.
Those people would, obviously a teacher is a teacher.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
See you in Asia.
Okay, that, so that Carrie's-
Aye.
I'm not really sure what that was. Is that no?
I think it was an aye, yes.
Okay.
I said aye, yes.
Yes, okay, all right, that passes seven zero. Thank you, sir, for your time. Big deal, thank y'all very much. Thank you. All right, we will carry on going into closed session at this point, make sure I'm correct, yes I am. Uh, we are going to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11 for the following purpose, to consult with the attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the board, to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual employed or considered for employment within the school system or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, grievance by or against any individual employee, and three, to prevent disclosure of the information that's privileged or confidential pursuant to General Statute 115(c)(402) and not considered public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statutes. Do I have such a motion?
So, moved.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes seven zero, we are in closed session. Passes seven zero, we are in closed session.
We have a motion to accept the personnel report.
Second.
Second. We have a second. You're none. All in favor of accepting the personnel report has... Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. You're none. Mr. Cribble is on, so we'll say seven zero.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, we have correspondence.
We have a couple things and announcements.
Anybody have correspondence? Correspondence? You're none. Announcements, here we go. Policy committee will be meeting on Tuesday, September seventeenth at ten a.m. Board of Education Center. General public will have the option to view remotely on New Hanover County Schools TV, YouTube, and the curriculum committee will be meeting on Monday, May... September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four at four fifteen at the New Hanover County Board of Education Center. The general public will have the option to remote... to view remotely on New Hanover County YouTube. Last bit of...
Made that motion.
Okay, there's a motion. We have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye.